It's now seven o'clock. I now call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. All members are present in person and let's stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lori's going to read the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement for us tonight.
Okay. Members of the Board and Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of the students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only make decisions at a properly called meetings. Board members recognize the individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by a board vote. Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communication directly with the Superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the Superintendent of the Board Chair prior to the meetings of a Board to address questions or concerns about agenda items. Board members and Superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. When a Board member or Superintendent have an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with the member of the Board Superintendent Team as appropriate. In the interest of public transparency and full robust debate, Board members will endeavor to actively engage and contribute to the Board's discussion and to share their perspectives on topics before the Board. Full participation from Board members in advance of a vote supports the Board in making an informed, well-considered decision as an important district matter, and the rest is online. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Agenda Review. I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. We'll take a vote now.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, thank you, and we're moving on to the Consent Agenda. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. We'll take the vote.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Next up, number six is Student Representatives. We have Hannah Basher, ASB President, and Galileo Hernandez, ASB Secretary.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Basher and I'm the ASB President.
Hello, I am Galileo Hernandez, the ASB Secretary. Thank you so much for having us tonight to share the activities that have been happening here at SHS.
We started off strong in our winter sports. Both the girls' and boys' basketball teams have started their preseason games. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 13th, there is a stacked home game. The boys' varsity team will play at 5:30 PM and the girls will play at 7:00 PM. Come watch and show your support.
Swim team also has a meet tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Silverton Swimming Pool. Wrestling has already started and has had two meets. Their next one is away at Liberty on Saturday, December 17.
Dance team just had a competition this Saturday and did amazing. They placed second in both events they competed in.
Choir has a concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Go watch and show your support.
Band just had a concert last week and it went great.
This is the last week many of our, or this last week, many of our clubs participated in decorating trees at the Community Center for the annual Silverton Community Christmas Fest. This was a Christmas tree decorating competition and the winner could win $500.
This leads us to talk about ASB and Tree of Giving. This year was a huge success.
If you don't know what Tree of Giving is, it is where SHS tries to raise money to shop for Christmas presents for kids in our community. Our goal is $5,000. However, with an anonymous donation, we were able to raise over $6,000.
We held a number of different fundraisers, including macho volleyball, cookie decorating, Mario Kart competition, open mic, teacher karaoke, a spelling bee, and a coin drive.
This week is our winter week and everyone is dressing up for themed dress-up days. This Wednesday is our career day and there will be 177 professionals coming to share their careers. SHS has a special schedule so that students can explore many of these careers. The Oregon Department of Education will also be visiting our career day to observe as we are considered an example of excellence.
Also this week, on Thursday, is our art show. During school, we show off all the art and ceramics pieces that our students have been working on. Students come to view the art, listen to music, and hang out with their friends.
Also, everyone who attends the art show is able to vote on the art and announce, and we announce, the winners.
Thank you for your time and go Foxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is our school presentation of the night, and we have Leslie Carsley from Central Howell.
Well, good evening to our Silver Falls District School Board of Directors, to our district leadership team, those in the audience, and those who may be joining us virtually. I'm Leslie Carsley, as Jen said, the principal at Central Howell Elementary, and I want to thank you all for your service to our district. I come to you this evening very excited to share some of the great things that are happening at Central Howell Elementary School since I last spoke to you the same time last year. We have a current enrollment of 156 students, which is up 34 from when I arrived at Central Howell in the summer of 2021. Due to the increased enrollment, we were able to add another teacher to the Central Howell team. I personally want to thank our district leadership team and members of the school board who, while during the process, continue to have open, honest conversations with myself, staff, and interested parents while speaking the truth about the budget and our fiduciary responsibility in making decisions that are aligned to money. We have the following classes for the 2022-23 school year. We have a kindergarten class, a 1-2 blend, a 2-3 blend, a 3-4 blend, a straight 5th grade class, a 6-7 blend, and a straight 8th. We love the fact that we are able to provide a very inviting, positive, caring environment for all who enter our school, from the time folks set foot in the office and are greeted by Ms. Jessie, Jessie Larson, our secretary, and then into the classroom and other areas of our school. This year, in accordance with the Silver Falls School District goals, at Central Howell, we are focused on teamwork, guaranteed and viable curriculum, and social-emotional learning. On the first day of school in September, we gathered at the flagpole to have our middle school students raise the flag, say the pledge of allegiance as a student body, followed by the singing of our national anthem. This was an outstanding point of unification for all of us. It is very important to me, as the instructional leader in the Silver Falls School District, that the goals of myself and the goals of our school district are in alignment. My professional goals are a reflection of our Superintendent Scott Drew's goals, and the goals of my teachers are a reflection of my goals. Together, we have a common focus regarding guaranteed and viable curriculum and social and emotional learning at Central Howell Elementary. At our August in-service, we spent quite a bit of time, as a staff licensed and classified alike, talking about what it means to be a team and what it means to be the best educator you can be. As you can see, thinking of everyone, not just yourself, having each other's back, respect, working together for a common goal, trust, compromise, pulling your own weight, respecting each other's differences, and being willing to share ideas. Of that list, respect and trust are paramount with me. What does being the best educator look like and sound like at Central Howell? Well, it looks like engagement of all students, collaboration, working together, flexibility, a sound of silence during instruction, and a safe place. The hiring of highly qualified staff or people who understand teaching and learning and will also be a good fit for our Central Howell community is very important to me. This year, we've been fortunate to hire some exceptional folks who have been a tremendous asset to the Central Howell staff. Kaylee Hall is teaching our 3-4 class. She's a first-year teacher and rocking it at Central Howell with our students. Heidi Herb is a veteran teacher. She's teaching 5th grade and is a wonderful addition to the staff. Mary Fitzsimmons is from Salem Kaiser and is teaching PE to our Central Howell students. Julia Marshall is not an unknown face to Central Howell, as she did a long-term substitute position for us last year, and she's teaching our middle school English Language Arts and Social Studies. Melissa Lenenga is our LRC teacher as well. Some other members of our team include our EAs, just recently hired. Her first day on the job today was Diane Beals and Michelle Walster. I'm happy to tell you tonight, we have a full staff. Guaranteed and viable curriculum. This slide shows our master schedule when everything takes place at Central Howell. When you see it in person, you can quickly see what is most important at Central Howell, a common focus school-wide on the teaching and learning of guaranteed and viable curriculum. Our teachers use their curriculum maps designed during PLC times to focus on content standards with a specified time that those standards will be taught throughout the year. As of right now, our teachers remain on track with where they should be in various units across the curriculum. Another key component of guaranteed and viable curriculum is data teams. Our data teams are grade-level bands who, along with our special education teacher, our counselor, myself, and if needed, the district behavior specialist, meet every three weeks to discuss specific students who are performing at the urgent intervention level in either reading and/or math. You can see from the slide that our grade-level bands are K-1, 2-band, 3, 4, 5-band, and our middle school band. Teachers have to come to these meetings prepared with data to share to determine strengths and challenges of said student. It is not about what a teacher feels, it's not what they believe, or what they see. It's critical that we have the data in front of us in order for us to review, to determine interventions the teacher can put into place in the classroom for the specific student to see if those interventions are supportive to the student, and if not, it's back to the drawing board. As I was thinking about this presentation over the past few weeks, I thought about how I could best tell the story of what takes place day in and day out at Central Howell Elementary. I could do the work, I could get input from our staff members, but then I thought, students. So, I went to each classroom, I told the students about my assignment for tonight and asked for their help. Our students are the characters who portray our story. So let's take a few minutes to see what they said. Mrs. Michael's class loves doing plays, they're learning about expanded form in math, and they love super quiet, uninterrupted reading time. Mrs. Gould's class is loving learning about art, math, and skip counting, AR tests, and they're getting smarter. Mrs. Hall's class loves to do multiplication and division word problems, they like writing, and they love being at school. My favorite part of learning is Mrs. Hall teaching me. Reading, because there's so much to read about. And Mrs. Herb's 5th grade, math. I enjoy working out problems and I love numbers. Math is my favorite part of learning because it's very important in our daily lives. My favorite part of learning at Central Howell is growing in my education with my friends. I love seeing how far I can get in my studies. It's really fun, if we all could have one of those students. My favorite part of learning is science, because you get to learn new stuff and you'll learn about chemical reactions. If there's a lesson I don't understand, and these are our middle school teachers, or middle school students speaking, if there is a lesson I don't understand in math, there are teachers that help me until I know how to do it. Same thing happens in ELA and Social Studies. My favorite part of Mrs. Barth and Mrs. Marshall's classes are they are very skillful and they have fun at the same time. My favorite part of learning is working with friends and having debates and conversations. It's easier to work when you can discuss answers with other people. Group projects help me learn better. The teachers and students make learning fun here at Central Howell. I love going to school here. The teachers are amazing and make it fun to learn. My favorite part of learning at Central Howell is we understand we don't always have to be right. I also ask the question, what is one assignment or task you especially have enjoyed doing this year? Ninja math, writing to our pen pals, poetry, writing personal narratives and realistic fiction stories. I like putting detail into my stories. I like the robot finger we made at the beginning of the school year. We did a mold experiment. We took food, put stuff on it, and saw how fast or slow the mold grew. It eventually got really stinky. When we did a play for the students at Central Howell in grades K through 4, it was really fun. An assignment I enjoyed doing in class so far this year was making a poster about our region. My group did the southeast region. It was fun to work together and learn things about our region. One assignment I have especially enjoyed doing this year is reading the book, Wonder. I have liked using the whiteboards to show my work, class debates, and the hatching of chickens. Researching and developing a Titan Moon Oil Rover. I liked learning about the Revolutionary War, because I got to know how our country became free. And then here is some learning in action in our classrooms. Our kindergarteners learning about the number 12 and what that looks like. Mrs. Michael's class, building together, reading and writing together. Mrs. Gould's class, literacy block, 90 minutes of whole group, small group, and individual work in reading and writing, and that occurs in all of our K through 5 classrooms. Mrs. Hall's class, students were given an equation, and then working together in a small group, they came up with a word problem, strategies to solve it, and then they showed their work through the design of a poster, and this poster was called Balloon Burst. Mrs. Herb's class, how strong is paper? Taking small pieces of paper and building something to see how long it would stand, carefully maneuvering the pieces. Mrs. Barth's 6th grade math class, sharing their work in solving a problem, a math problem on their individual whiteboard for a quick review by their teacher. And in Mrs. Marshall's class, students learning to play the ukulele during what I need or win time as an elective choice. Social-emotional learning, positive behavioral interventions and supports. This is a major system that has been put in place at Central Howell, and it has helped everyone, as we all speak the same language regarding being safe, being responsible, and being respectful. There are common expectations in every area of our school, from the classroom, restrooms, library, PE, playground, et cetera. We use PAWS tickets to reward the positive behavior of our students. At the beginning, we were giving out PAWS like it was water, as we wanted to acknowledge the positive behavior while also showing students who may be having difficulty with a certain behavior that this is what it looks like and sounded like. Each Thursday, the PAWS patrol goes from classroom to classroom to choose five names out of the PAWS container, and those children get to choose from a plethora of prizes. Our middle school students play the PAWS patrol song now when we go in. This last week, we added another layer to this, and that all of PAWS, the PAWS tickets from each classroom are dumped into a plastic container that has lines on it. When the PAWS tickets get to that specific line, we get to have a school-wide award. This Wednesday, we're having an all-school hat day, as we traditionally have a no-hat policy at Central Howell. So this will be a treat for them. Students have been able to help us come up with the menu of school-wide prizes as well. In addition, we have the Golden Shoe and the Golden Broom Award. At the end of each week, our PE teacher, Mrs. Fitzsimmons, reflects on the sportsmanship, safety, respect, and responsible behavior of the classes, and they get the golden shoe to hang in their classroom for the week. Our custodian, Mr. Sitchely, does the same by reflecting on the room that was the cleanest consistently during the week, and that class gets the golden broom in their room for the week. So everyone looks forward to Monday to see who will get the golden shoe or the golden broom award. At Central Howell, we focus on character building. Each month has a specific character trait focus. Teachers teach about the character trait for the month, and then again, do some reflection on one or two students who have consistently demonstrated that trait. They are recognized at our monthly assembly with a special certificate and a package of M&amp;M's for being magnificent and marvelous. Parents are invited to attend the celebration as well. This year, the district has implemented Playworks at all elementary schools. Playworks helps children at all ages stay active and build valuable social and emotional skills through play. In August, all of our educational assistants, counselor, and PE teacher went through Playworks training at Robert Frost Elementary. We're looking forward to the month of February to have further training for our staff, which will help us further implement this great resource. So, as you can see, there has a lot that is happening at Central Howell, and I'm very proud of the work of our staff and our teachers. I would encourage our staff, teachers, and students. I would encourage you to come and visit if time allows. I'd love to do a walkthrough of classrooms, and together we could talk about what we observe with regard to teamwork, guaranteed and viable curriculum, and social and emotional learning at Central Howell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carsley.
Any questions for, for Mrs. Carsley about Central Howell?
I just have to say, I did have kind of a tear in my eye early on in your presentation. That was wonderful. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Carsley was my 5th grade teacher, so it's just kind of something has come full circle for me here.
I just wanted to say on behalf of Leslie, while she was presenting, I was watching all of you and your body language, and what I saw from the seven of you is exactly how I feel every single time I go to Central Howell. I haven't met very many leaders that can match my passion for teaching and learning, and going to see Leslie is like a breath of fresh air. Every time I show up, it's about talking shop. We're just a couple of instructional leaders walking classrooms, and when you walk into the office at Central Howell, there's no question who the instructional leader is at that school, and you see that throughout the building, evidence of that every day. Leslie doesn't like it when I talk about her in front of people, because she's so humble, but we are so blessed to have her in this district and her leadership. I'm a better instructional leader because of it, and thank you very much, Leslie.
It's an honor.
All right, well, we will move down the agenda to the Silver Falls Education Association, and I believe we'll be joined by Allison Stolffes via Zoom. All right, we can come back around.
So maybe come back.
Sure. All right, we will move on to public comment. If you would like to speak during public comment, and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the Board. And while we wait for folks to step up, I'm going to read our public comment statement. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the Board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind: If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the Board Chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide us with your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The Board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or Board members during public comment. Please understand that the Board's primary role is to listen, and you will not, you will likely not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board Decorum Agreement. Anybody in the audience? Online?
Nobody online. But it does look like Allison may have been promoted back to panelists. And disappeared again.
All right, well, next up, we can catch her after the Administrator and Staff Reports. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay, so Scott, you're up.
And we'll give Daniel a minute to pull up those slides, and Board, if you could do me a favor, if you could pull up those slides in front of you as well. I sent the link earlier today. I just think it's easier if you have it right in front of you than having to squint at either the two screens. And if you just look up, I'll know that you're ready to go. And if you need to help out your neighbor, that's okay too. All right, so I want to give you an update as to where we are in the Bond Advisory Committee process. As you know, we have three of your colleagues observing the process as well, Janet, Owen, and Jennifer, and I'd like to, for you three, to feel free to chime in anytime you want while I present these slides, and I think it's good for you also to hear their perspective about what they're seeing on the committee as well. We just finished meeting three. The committee is really starting to grapple with some difficult decisions. I'm going to walk you through sort of where we've been and where we're headed, but I want to start off first by directing your attention to this slide, and these are the general obligation bonds in Oregon that passed last month, and that's really, really encouraging, especially when you look at some of these districts who, where it is not an easy place to pass a bond. It's really great to see that five out of the seven districts had their general obligation bonds passed, and then you can see the difference in yes and no votes. to, you know, the possibilities that are out there. If we do the right things, if we take the right steps moving forward, and we have a positive mindset, until evidence suggests otherwise, I think we're on the right track. So where are we, where is the Bond Advisory Committee right now? Remember, we have 21 members. I am not a part of the Advisory Committee. I am in a support role. My role is to be a liaison to the Board, and we have all sorts of other staff members in the room to support the Bond Advisory Committee, whether that's additional information or to clarify questions that they have, what have you. This is 100% the Bond Advisory Committee's work, and right now, I have outlined for you there in orange...
During the week and that class gets the golden broom in their room for the week. So everyone looks forward to Monday to see who will get the golden shoe or the golden broom awards. At Central Howl, we focus on character building. Each month has a specific character trait focus. Teachers teach about the character trait for the month and then again do some reflection on one or two students who have consistently demonstrated that trait. They are recognized at our monthly assembly with a special certificate and a package of M&Ms for being magnificent and marvelous. Parents are invited to attend the celebration as well. This year, the district has implemented Playworks at all elementary schools. Playworks helps children at all ages stay active and build valuable social and emotional skills through play. In August, all of our educational assistants, counselor and PE teacher went through Playworks training at Robert Frost Elementary. We're looking forward to the month of February to have further training for our staff, which will help us further implement this great resource. So, as you can see, there has a lot that is happening at Central Howl and I'm very proud of the work of our staff and our teachers. I would encourage our staff, teachers and students. I would encourage you to come and visit if time allows. I'd love to do a walkthrough of classrooms and together we could talk about what we observe with regard to teamwork, guaranteed and viable curriculum and social and emotional learning at Central Howl. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carsley.
Any questions for, for Mrs. Carsley about Central Howl?
I just have to say I did have kind of a tear in my eye early on in your presentation. That was wonderful. And for those of you who don't know, Ms. Carsley was my fifth grade teacher. So it's just kind of something has come full circle for me here.
I just wanted to say on, on behalf of Leslie, while she was presenting, I was watching all of you and your body language. And what I saw from the seven of you is exactly how I feel every single time I go to Central Howl. I haven't met very many leaders that can match my passion for teaching and learning. And going to see Leslie is like a breath of fresh air. Every time I show up, it's about talking shop. We're just a couple of instructional leaders walking classrooms. And when you walk into the office at Central Howl, there's no question who the instructional leader is at that school. And you see that throughout the building, evidence of that every day. Leslie doesn't like it when I talk about her in front of people because she's so humble, but we are so blessed to have her in this district and her leadership. I'm a better instructional leader because of it and thank you very much, Leslie.
All right, well, we will move down the agenda to the Silver Falls Education Association. I believe we'll be joined by Allison Stolffes via Zoom. Hi, Allison, can you hear us?
So Daniel thinks she's having some tech issues.
All right, we can come back around.
So maybe come back.
Sure. All right, we will move on to public comment. If you would like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. And while we wait for folks to step up, I'm going to read our public comment statement. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be, and to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide us with your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen and you will not, you will likely not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. Anybody in the audience? Online?
Nobody online. But it does look like Allison may have been promoted back to panelists. And disappeared again.
All right, well, next up, we can catch her after the administrator and staff reports. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay, so Scott, you're up.
And we'll give Daniel a minute to pull up those slides. And board, if you could do me a favor, if you could pull up those slides in front of you as well. I sent the link earlier today. I just think it's easier if you have it right in front of you than having to squint at either the two screens. And if you just look up, I'll know that you're ready to go. And if you need to help out your neighbor, that's okay too. All right, so I want to give you an update as to where we are in the bond advisory committee process. As you know, we have three of your colleagues observing the process as well. Janet, Owen and Jennifer. And I'd like to, for you three to feel free to chime in anytime you want while I present these slides. And I think it's good for you also to hear their perspective about what they're seeing on the committee as well. We just finished meeting three. The committee is really starting to grapple with some difficult decisions. I'm going to walk you through sort of where we've been and where we're headed. But I want to start off first by directing your attention to this slide. And these are the general obligation bonds in Oregon that passed last month. And that's really, really encouraging. Especially when you look at some of these districts who, where it is, is not an easy place to pass a bond. It's really great to see that five out of the seven districts had their general obligation bonds passed. And then you can see the, the difference in yes and no votes. Each bond election is fairly close. But I think that that's just, you know, a testament to, you know, the possibilities that are out there. If we do the right things, if we take the right steps moving forward and we have a positive mindset until evidence suggests otherwise, I think we're on the right track. So where are we, where is the bond advisory committee right now? Remember, we have 21 members. I am not a part of the advisory committee. I am in a support role. My role is to be a liaison to the board. And we have all sorts of other staff members in the room to support the bond advisory committee, whether that's additional information or to clarify questions that they have, what have you. This is 100% the bond advisory committee's work. And right now, I have outlined for you there in orange where we are in December, January, where we'll be moving into our fourth meeting on January 19th. And that will be to finalize the draft of the recommendation. And then I will bring that draft forward to you with Wenaha at the January work session. And they'll also go through with you in minute detail the process so far. So you have a really clear idea. And remember, the goal at, at the end this spring is for you to take action confidently. And I think the word confidently speaks for itself, but we cannot do this work without the entire support of the board. And you will make the final decision on whether or not we go out for a bond in November 2023. So we completed meeting number three last Thursday. There is a very strong support for a replacement of Silverton Middle School. We discussed that at length. And we came to agreement last meeting on the definition of warm, safe and dry, which was a theme throughout the long range facilities planning process through those 15 meetings. One thing we know for sure is that we're focused on a strategy that will provide something for each one of our facilities in Silver Falls. And right now, what we're doing is prioritizing all the things that have to do with warm, safe and dry in our K5s and our K8s and prioritizing those. So there was a, some group work. The committee worked together in groups to see which was a, a primary, had primary importance or secondary priority. And I don't know if, Jennifer, I worked at your table. Janet, I don't know if you, if you wanted to add your experience of working in that activity? Anything you wanted to share, Owen, also? Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say it was, it was for better than worse, it wasn't an in-depth kind of an exercise. It was kind of a top of mind, take all of these different things and categorize them. So I think that was probably a pretty honest way to get, to get those things broken up. But I was actually just kind of surprised that the groups, really in terms of their ranking, above the line or below the line, pretty consistent around the room.
Yeah, it was a really good exercise, not only to come up with an ultimate definition, which I know Wenaha group is going to put together for us based on our input, but just the process of going through all of the various priorities. You know, whether it's, you know, changing out windows or fixing sewers or basements that are leaking. One, it gave a little bit more insight into how serious some of these issues are because they had gathered them from all of the schools and sort of, you know, put them in a bucket, so to speak. So not only how serious they are, but then also how difficult it can be sometimes to figure out, you know, when there are so many things that need addressing. What are we possibly going to not put on the list? And so I thought the exercise itself was also just really kind of eye opening and, and good.
That's a really good point, Janet, because all of you know that what was $185 million worth of deferred maintenance is now 200 million because the costs of, of, of everything has gone through the roof. Things will only continue to get more expensive, not less expensive. And so it is, it was a challenge, what I observed of, of trying to, trying to figure out what level priority some of those fixes were. This is a slide taken directly from the presentation. I'll give you a minute to read it. It just tells us a little bit about the next steps. But I think it's important you have a chance to, to look at it and then I'll, I'll add my piece. So that, that outlines what early January, what the month of January will look like for us. So you can look forward to us firming up the bond recommendation and coming back to you with polling results. This will be our second of three rounds to inform our decision-making around this or, which I should say the committee's decision-making and eventually yours. I do want to point out the second bullet, which is outreach to reiterate the district's commitment to keep all K8 schools open. I cannot say this enough, and I'll continue to say this. Our commitment to make sure that we protect our K8 schools, that has been made crystal clear to us during each one of our community listening and learning sessions where we asked our K8 communities what they would like their future to look like. And I've reiterated time and time again that the district is not interested at all in considering any other plan than keeping our K8 schools open. From what I know now as a superintendent and as this school district servant, I couldn't imagine trying to come up with a plan that would do anything other than keep our K8 schools open. That's how much they mean to those school communities. And I just want to make sure as a matter, matter of public record that, that, that I say that as well. Any questions on that slide? All right, and so these are the next steps, which I, I've covered some of them. Number one is preparing for round two of polling. That'll be in early January, kind of like how we did ours the first week of school. That'll be done that week. Wenaha and Wright Public Affairs and Patinkin Research are all collaborating together on the formula for the polling. It's, there's a whole science to it, as you know. This is not survey data. This is polling data and there's a gigantic difference between the two. They're going to be looking for a similar sample size of 400, which is an enormous sample size for the size of Silver Falls. And I will show you those questions beforehand, just like we did before. So any concerns that the board has, we'll take care of that well before this goes out. We don't have a board work session this month, but I'll be communicating to you in other ways, just to make sure I have your input on that. Like I said before, at the fourth meeting on the 19th, we'll be firming up the bond recommendation. And then on January 23rd, Wenaha and myself and Wenaha will present to you what that bond recommendation looks like. And then we'll go over in painful detail and overview the entire process so that you are crystal clear on where it is that we've come from and where we're going. And then third, we are right in the middle of planning for structured community listening and learning sessions to begin. Jerry Colonna will be coming back to facilitate those meetings. One of the things we learned in the seven listening and learning sessions we did last year was the, the format and recipe for how we plan those listening and learning sessions. The questions will be different. Of course, they'll be 100% focused on a bond recommendation, on asking our committee, our communities what it is that they'll support, what it is they'd like to see changed, that sort of thing. But it's the whole planning process that we did in each one of the seven, which was to plan, to implement, to reflect. So plan, implement, reflect, we did that seven different rounds. And so we were really practiced by the time we got to the last listening sessions. In fact, it was really nine because we added on Mark Twain and Robert Frost. So having all that practice, one of the biggest benefits was we really had a winning recipe for, for how we address a listening session in that short period of time. So we're working that out. That'll be January, February and March, but that's TBD. Just know within that time, we will be collecting feedback. And then we will come back together to revise that recommendation so that by the time it comes to you in April or May, you'll have a really good handle on, on what that looks like. And I have no doubt that our participation by our board will be high at these listening and learning sessions. It's actually critical. And the benefit of this year is we're not doing it outside in tents. So it'll be in warm gymnasiums, so that will be nice for a change. I do expect big turnouts for this, just like we did last year. And it's just, it's just a great process for us to have every single year in our district to, to implement this process once a year, to really listen to what's on people's minds. Any questions about those three steps, next steps? Anything that I can clarify for you? Pretty clear? Okay. Now I want to go back to the three phases of the bond. And you remember this from a presentation I did this summer. And Jeremy Wright is, is really the expert about managing the entire three phases of the bond. And this is how he likes to, to set it up. That the development part is really what we've done until this point. The, the second phase of the bond is really the most difficult. And that is where we take the bond recommendation and we try to figure out the themes and the feedback that are most critical to take a look at in revision of that draft so that we can come up with a recommendation that the community will support. So this really does have something to do with what the district needs, but it's, it's the district needs coupled with what the community needs as well. And then coming up with a full package that, that people are willing to support. That's the most important thing. And so we have to play each one of these phases well in order for this to be a success. And so we're right in the start of number two, which is community engagement. We, we're in our planning meetings right now for how those are going to look. And going into the third phase, again, the goal is for you to take action on a recommendation, but that you feel confident doing so. And I don't see this process being successful without everyone's support. I just don't see that as viable otherwise. So it's, it's really something to be keeping in mind. It's really important that we approach this whole process until we know differently with 110% energy and focus and with a winning mindset. Nothing is more destructive in this type of a process than a defeatist attitude. And that's not something that, that I take lightly either. I'm very sensitive to those types of things. And we just need to work through this together with faith that, that there's a really good chance this could work out together. And we just need to approach this as a team. And after we present the final recommendation to you in May, you'll, you, we'll talk about that at a work session. Then you'll take action in June. And that would set us up four to five months ahead of time to begin the full election campaign process. And so we're right on track for that as well. This is Jeremy Wright's visual, but I, I think it's good to end with this and, and how we get to a successful recommendation. And it's the needs of the district plus the needs of the community, taking into account the bonding capacity of the community and really trying to get to that sweet spot of, of meeting all those needs. It's a very, very difficult equation to try to balance. But we have really smart people working on this bond and we have a really smart board of critical thinkers. And so I just wanted to end on that note and I'll take any questions that you have from me.
I don't have a question, but a comment just about the last meeting that we had. It was nice that Jeremy Wright was there. He hadn't been live with us and it was really nice to have him there. So his part is kind of ramping up. The one part that I wish we had had more time to kind of dive into, well, I can't say that I wish, but I wonder about, is that there were some perspectives expressed. And like, for example, like there were two different kinds of perspectives that I want to talk about. One is kind of like the K8 perspective and one is for the, from, from the, the people who live in town. And to me, I would have loved for us to have a structured kind of eye-opening activity that would help us take perspective so that we could see that, those different perspectives because I saw a need. I just, it, to me, it seemed like folks are, folks haven't stepped. The, the people, we have awesome committee members, but I think there's, there's room to step into those different perspectives and try to, try to see from different directions. So that was the part that I, you know, was wondering about. I don't know if you guys noticed that as well. And I guess that's a part of leadership too, that we can model as well because that's part of our work is to kind of be above different perspectives and do what's good for everybody, you know? So anyway, just, just a thought.
Well, since you're, since you're going to bring it up and pique my interest, but what, give me a, for instance, like what, what kind of things were being discussed when that concern arose in your?
Well, in general, I think that there is a feeling that, and these people who, who raised this were not unique. I've heard, heard all of the perspectives before. It's just the fact that, you know, needing to sit down with somebody and maybe go back and forth and, and talk about things like, like the idea about K8s and inefficiencies, right? Well, there may be some inefficiencies to that, but there's also some other great things. And as Scott said, we're not taking that away. This is what people want, right? And then there's the other side where folks are, want to see, is that what the voters really want though? And aren't those, you know, don't, don't voters want the efficiencies that, you know, some, something different would, would give to us? Cause it would, it would have us more financially in a better spot, you know? So that, that kind of conversation, you can talk about that in just dollars and cents really easily, right? Well, I don't, I can't say that, not really easily. But you can talk about it in terms of dollars and cents, but there's more to it than just that piece. And I did not see a ton of empathy for, from like some folks who probably don't come to town very often, right? And they're, they're, they're in the K8 community and they don't necessarily see the need that we have at the middle school. Like not as much enthusiasm around the middle school. And, and let me tell you, that was hard for me to see because the middle school is in such dire need. And so, yeah, like, like, like wanting more for their school, right? The, the K8 school, but not seeing that, this other big need over here. And so just, you know, I, I see, I see room for, for both of those perspectives to broaden if they could just perspective take for a little while. So anyway, just my two cents there.
Do you think that an activity or field trip would help maybe help them to kind of coalesce and, and see where the concern is? First, our middle school, I mean?
Probably, I don't know if that's the scope of the bond advisory committee though. Like I'm saying these things, I'm, I'm freestyling here. But that's just, I mean, that's something for us as leaders to know that there, there's, there's a need for us to see different perspectives in our community. And if, I, I am afraid that if we don't do that, we're not going to, you know, get what we need for, for safe, warm and dry for everybody.
You're right, the people that you see on the bond advisory committee with those issues, those are just reflective of the many people that are in the community that are.
There's nothing, there was nothing new, nothing new. This is just what we have to work with, you know?
But when, when I was on the, the K8 work group and also attending the, the listening sessions we had with the K8 communities, you know, just to kind of dovetail along your comment about the middle school, I, I didn't hear any disagreement whatsoever from our K8 communities that the middle school was not the top priority. And make, Scott, somebody else, anybody, tell me if I'm wrong, but I didn't, I didn't hear any disagreement. But, but I think what I did hear was, look, if we're going to be on board to, to, to vote for a bond that encompasses a massive project, which is long overdue into the middle school, there, you know, I, each individual K-8 community also needs to have some improvements done too amongst that. But I, I personally didn't hear any. And also reading through the results and reading through all the data that we saw on the, out there at the listening sessions, I didn't, I didn't get that at all, that there was any
I
non-acknowledged of that.
I disagree. I sensed a tension a little bit with the book. I, I agree with you. I think people were coming around to the fact about the middle school, but there was that tension. Even if it was sort of a, the cat's whisker. But it was there, and I, and I think that's, in lies the balance. How much for Safe Warm and Dry? What does that mean? And we so badly need a middle school, but then what does that look like? I, what I was hearing was how much. I think it was the numbers that were really starting to settle in with some on that committee. And it, it can be a little overwhelming. I mean, when you really start looking at all the zeros, you know?
Maybe the tension was to, like, again, making sure that, that they don't feel like they're getting, get left out. If, if they vote for a bond, the middle schools included, you know, that there was just making sure their communities, and again, from their, from each listening session, that's going to be their view, which is extremely important. But that they weren't, maybe that's the tension we felt too.
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah.
And I guess I would agree with you, Erin, in your estimation. I felt more encouraged, I think. Let me just say that that meeting that we just had, I think, was more of a, oh, yeah. Because I was feeling so good about those meetings. I'm like, oh, yeah, because we did talk in more depth, and that's the difference. And I, I was like reminded, like, oh, yeah, we've got this, this, this thing. Yeah, and it's not necessarily tension against each other.
Right.
It's just not seeing each other's point of view, because your experience is different, so.
I've got a question. I guess it's related probably, but it's also slightly different. So, the last go-around on the bond, one of the big tensions that I recall from, from the different community groups discussing was this sense of, you know, you're going to build a Taj Mahal for town as a, as a, you know, symbol of how great Silverton is, and you're going to throw us your crumbs, right? And I just wonder if that conversation has come up in these word, no?
I remember, I remember thinking, we don't need this, because this is amazing, right? This, this school is amazing. And, and this is my personal point of view, and my husband and I have had this conversation a lot, like, isn't there somebody out there who's already designed this really efficient building that can be flexible, and it doesn't have to be, you know, super costly? So, I thought that myself. I'm not sure that we ever scratched it during the
There were some comments about making sure that, that what we're doing at all the schools is substantial.
Yes.
But, you know, I think we're probably just a little bit before those next conversations.
Okay, fair enough. But just, I would, I would keep your feelers out for that one too, because that, that was a common refrain from the last go-around, and it failed. And so, that's something to, I guess, be wary of.
Well, and, and then when the cost conversation comes up, that, that'll be when we really see
Yeah.
people having to weigh, you know?
What's that threshold?
And that's where the difficult decisions will be made by the Bond Advisory Committee. And those will not be easy, but it, it does, I agree with, and this topic came up during the last meeting, that, you know, it needs to be something visible, more than just a new phone system, as it were. Like a covered player at Scott's Mills, for example. You know, we're in Oregon. That's, that's absolutely a, a need, an instructional need for our kids out there. And, and that's just one of 50 things that we need to be taking a look at. One of the things I want to mention each time we talk about the bond is that every day that goes by, things get more expensive. And so, if you think and visualize in your mind as a board member for a minute, what is now, what would now be a $68 million middle school, no frills, $68 million with your basic comprehensive middle school, that was $50 million five years ago. So, if that doesn't grab the public's attention, I don't know what will. Because we will get to a point where the bond capacity will be so prohibitive that there will be a point of no return. And the middle school will not last much longer. And so, begs the question, where are we going to put 400 kids? I think that's really important, that as a board superintendent team, we get that narrative clear, because those are just facts. Things are not going to ever get less expensive. And this is a, a issue that is so Titanic that only the community can solve it. And so, I think it's really important to think about things along those lines, knowing that tough decisions are coming up, and that trade-offs are going to need to be made. But what we're talking about here is future generations of Silvertonian children who need the opportunity to go to Silver Falls schools, so that our facilities can reflect the love and respect we have for them. And having said that, we could transition if, if there are no more questions.
I just want to say one more thing, is that the idea about whatever is on the menu for the K-8s being visible was like an important thing. That's not always safe, the Safe Warm and Dry doesn't always show up real clearly on that piece. So, that's, again, another
Another
challenge.
Right.
But I also want to make one point, sort of dovetail on what you just said, Scott, is I feel like it's helpful to look at this as, this isn't a decision between passing a bond and stasis. If we don't pass a bond, we're going to be in continued decline. So, what are we going to do if we don't pass a bond? Like, we're going to need as much of a plan for that, and that's, that's scary times. Like, what is our plan? Because you can't just say, oh, well, we didn't pass it. No, now we need an alternative plan, and there aren't that many options there, because buildings are just going to start literally falling apart, you know? And like you said, it gets more expensive. So, I just think we need to understand that it isn't a, we get a bond or it's neutral.
Right.
It's we get a bond or it's very negative, and what's our plan then?
And there isn't a plan that can take care of the, the massive needs we have in this district structurally, except for a general obligation bond. And so, I think that's really important. So, if we don't pass the bond, my recommendation to you is we go out again. And if we don't pass that one, we go out again. And we keep going out for a bond until the thing becomes a reality. Because this issue, again, can only be solved by the community coming together.
One of the questions that came up too, someone had asked, well, you know, with regard to some of the deferred maintenance expenses, well, why aren't we just paying for this? Why are we deferring this maintenance? Why aren't we paying for this out of our budget? And I think helping the community understand how little there really is, because it's a statewide problem. It's not just us. We didn't do something wrong.
Right.
No one in the state has money for capital investment. And so, for them to understand that, you know, 90% of our budget goes to personnel, there's not a whole lot left over for maintenance.
General maintenance, there's no public school district in the United States of America that doesn't have deferred maintenance.
Right.
General fund budgets cannot cope with that. And so, I, I think that's, that's a big educational piece that I think, where you can have a lot of influence in the community. We start talking about students' needs, we start talking about appropriate staff levels, services, which all get more expensive, salaries and benefits. And so, there's not much left over to do the types of improvements we need. And having past bonds fail have only prolonged this and made it more expensive. And so, it truly is do or die time to reconcile our facilities. It is the number one challenge facing this school district, and this school district's survival, if I may.
So, who, who or what entity decides how to promote the importance? I mean, I, I know we're having these meetings, and I, and I understand the community, but how do we have other things that are maybe more engaging visually, physically? So, it really brings home what's going on? Because honestly, people can drive by the middle school, and they see this wonderful old, that really carries all the heart, all the internal organs of all those little cubicles and everything. And I don't think people quite understand that. I think they still see it as an active building that's being used, but it's not. It's kind of a museum. But it is, and I love it. I think it's, it's beautiful in its own way. But how do we bring that to people? Because we can talk all night, but unless people really physically see it and touch it and engage, I don't know how much, how more entrenched we can be as far as convincing the importance of this bond.
One of, yeah, good question, Lori. One of the questions that came up in the Bond Advisory Committee meeting was, can we talk about this? Can we talk about what we're talking about here? And the answer to that is absolutely. The bond, every single one of the bond committee members was chosen for a precise reason. And that is the representation of the many Silver, the many school communities that are represented, and the influence of their communication on their peers. And no one has more influence than the seven of you. And, and I, you know that. And so, I would say the time to start talking about this is right now. In fact, it was six months ago. And I have to really, really encourage you to use all the different tools available to you to communicate with your constituents why this is so urgent. Our community needs to hear this unanimous voice from this board. This process will not tolerate any division at all. We need to put all of that aside and take a look at the bigger picture, and how it will benefit generations of unborn Silvertonian kids. And not to sound dramatic, but it is. This is extremely dramatic, and this isn't a matter of, of, of competing values. It's not a matter of anything else, except we need tangible facilities to put our kids where learning can take place and students can flourish. So, that, the, so for our part as a district, all of this will start with our listening sessions in January. So, this word will start really getting ramped up once we start our listening sessions, because we'll be at all 11 school communities. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, we hired Jeremy Wright of Wright Public Affairs for a very good reason. And that is the publicity, the education piece, the forming of a political action committee, which has to happen after June, if you take action confidently as a board. All of that will start to fall into place. That's the reason why we brought in experts in this process, because we cannot afford to miss a step. So, if we do not pass a bond, it won't be because we didn't work our tails off, and we didn't look at every single detail that we had control over. And so, this really is a true team effort to try to get this thing to come to reality. And what I would challenge the board to do, each board member is, is you already know the arguments for and against. And I would challenge you, I would challenge you to have those conversations with your constituents, to try to get everybody to see the bigger picture here. That is the most important thing. This is not time to be an individual. It's not time to represent your own special interests. This is about doing what's right for Silverton kids, pure and simple, nothing more.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item. Yes, which is Allison. Silver Falls Education Association. Allison, are you there?
She said that, well, let's just put it this way, she will be at the January 9th meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's bedtime, probably.
Well, she had a funny thing she said, but like, it took me a minute to pull it up. So, anyways, she said she'd be here on January 9th.
Sorry, Allison. Okay, so we're moving on then to our discussion items. We are at a group of policy updates that we introduced at the last work session. This is the second reading. I know there was one question about, oh, wait, this isn't the same group, is it? This is the same group, but we don't have, okay, well, I'll just stop talking now. We have a chance to talk about these, these policies, so this is your chance. You can talk about any of them. It doesn't have to be in order.
So, my question is to Dan, or is there any follow-up from the action item at the workshop, work session? Where we had asked about the academic achievement policy, and why in particular some of the things were struck out. Item number three, I believe, was of particular interest.
They're looking at each other.
Yeah, the, I reached out to OSBA, and they went back quite a ways to find out where that language did or didn't happen. And he, and Rick Stuckey said, he said, looking at the policy in his opinion, looking at line item one, it's very similar in language to three. So, he feels that's why they, they just omitted it.
Okay.
That was his answer.
Okay, so my two cents is while item number one, bullet one, first paragraph, uses the term at least annually, item three said regularly during the school year, I think regularly during a school year is far more appropriate for a policy than at least annually.
I agree. I, 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 I just kind of cringe in, in, at the idea of taking out that number three.
Me too.
What's that?
I'll, I'll keep it in if you all choose.
Well, does anybody else have any other comments?
Can we blend some of the, what three says into one? Can we change the verbiage from, to, to parents and students will be informed regularly of their students' progress toward achieving academic content standards, including but not limited to?
I'd be, that, I'd be happy with that.
Let me just double check a couple of things.
Does that, does that make sense? So, you take that first part of the three, will be informed regularly?
Because it seems strange, not strange, but perhaps unnecessary to list. Progress reports, conferences, telephone, electronic, and other forms, like, we know how people communicate. We don't necessarily have to list all those out. So, I would agree with you, Erin, that just moving regularly to the, to number one, and then letting the rest of that number three go would
I, I would also, if we were going to do that, pull the, the phrase behavioral performance up into that sentence as well.
Yeah. I can see that.
I like that.
And then I'm good.
All right, so behavioral performance and regularly. All right, Debbie's going to make changes, and then we can look at it on the third reading. Everybody good with that?
Can you send those, well, you'll send them out ahead, but
I can, I can send them out
As soon as you can would be preferred. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
All right, we are, oh, any other? That was the only substantive issue that we had last time, but Janet, I wanted to make sure you weren't here.
I'm good. No, I had some questions, but they were resolved, so I'm good.
All right. Okay, so we will move on then to the second public comment period. This is specific to discussion and action items. If you'd like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board.
Nobody of the five are raising their hands.
Okay. Uh, we're going to move on then to number 13, future agenda item request. Does anybody have a request? Music. Okay, oh, you like, go ahead and explain. Okay, oh, you like, go ahead and explain.
Oh, sure. Just how our music programs are working currently in our district. Because after the committee and everything, and so how, how things are moving along.
I'll second that. That's a good idea.
Okay. I'm moving on to executive session. We are going to now move into executive session under ORS 192 dot 6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed and ORS 192 dot 6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, a sick leave bank request. We're now back in open session and the next item on our agenda is to consider a sick leave bank item?
I move that we approve a sick leave bank request for Michaela Straub for up to 20 days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a sick leave bank request for Michaela Straub for up to 20 days. Um, it's, let's vote.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, and without objection, we will adjourn.
Good.